We are beginning up on work. Just as we continue to kind of look at what was done here, what stage it was brought to, look at whether other places are going, checking out the research. We're actually trying to probe some research in regards to schools that have made start time changes to see if it was in fact that the school or the kids that they thought it would be. So it's an exciting process and I look forward to continually keeping updated on that. And that's just finally, you know, this time of year is when we wrap up obviously our fall seasons. We've had the fall play and all the fall athletics. And I just want to congratulate our students really across the board on their accomplishments in the first couple of years. It's amazing that we've gone this far, really culminated with a Frosty football game. But kudos to you, John, and to ourselves for actually being proactive and having some juniors on the sidelines for the kids to help them finish their studies. I think we really appreciate that and they get to tell their grandchildren about how they were.
Thanks to Dean Bowman as well. He was on that was a little unsure that it's not available and it was certainly used. People went inside.
So that's pretty much it unless anyone has any questions. Does anyone have a pack agenda?
Anybody have any questions? All right, so we're good. Let's go on then to, John, let's go to the proposed changes to the program of studies then.
Sure. So what I thought we could do, I'll just kind of give you just the quick summary and then if people have some additional questions or clarification, I'd be happy to answer that. So, you know, every year we look at this program of studies. We look at ways in which we can improve offerings, ways in which we can make it in some cases more flexible for our students, more flexible for our teachers. We sometimes look at wording. We sometimes will look at particular courses that maybe we haven't offered in quite some time and make those necessary adjustments. And in some cases, the adjustments are made as a result of college board or some other outside forces that, you know, we've had to change, whether it's the Department of Education or whatever. So, you know, just a couple of things. In English, you can see that we have shifted, the American Lit will now be a full year for students who are not enrolled in advanced placement. Number of reasons, but right now it's a semester course. This will also enable us to have more culturally responsive texts included. Gretchen Donahue, the new In-List Department Chair, wanted to have it that way so that we could in fact dovetail it in with our cultural responsiveness goal and initiatives. But then also it ties in really well with the US history curriculum that is running that entire junior year. Many schools do that full year. In doing so, it actually pushes some of those potential classes to the senior year. And I know you can see here that some of the courses that are removed, this is just for the year and we would revisit this. So any course that isn't necessarily going to be in here for next year, it doesn't mean we can't bring that course back. These are simply courses that just have not been offered in several years. So it's a little bit like a club or an activity that we have gone through the appendix C and we've looked at and said, okay, this just hasn't been offered for so many years to do that. And it also then, some of it depends upon the course of who's teaching it, who's teaching what. So some of it does come down to personnel as well. But I did want to let the regional school committee know that it doesn't mean that we couldn't bring these back at a future time. It might just mean in some cases, these teachers would need to receive some additional training, do some more work around the text sets that are related with these. And in a couple of cases, there are courses that have been offered in the past by previous teachers who have since retired. In the fine and performing arts, a way for continuing to be creative and flexible is the idea that they're looking for vocal ensemble and then concert and pep band. Ideally, we would always want to have kids be able to take that course and then also take their electives. And we opened it up and made it more flexible thanks to the regional school committee in past years where kids can focus in on music for four years, art in four years. This gives kids another opportunity if they still want to keep their hand in the area of music while also still taking those electives. So what Jeff and Janice have been doing is looking at ways where we can still maximize our numbers in those programs, keeping those kids who have a musical interest involved, but also allowing those same kids to have access to other electives opposite that that they might want to take. Because as you know, our schedule is tight with the number of courses. So that's the rationale behind that. We had several conversations about that and I think it's something that they are willing to do and want to pilot it. And frankly, we had been doing it informally anyways. We had been having each year, one or two kids was taking it on a semester basis and what we decided to do is publicize it so that more students would know in advance that this was a real possibility or something they could do. In the past, it had been if a student showed real interest and they came to guidance and then they spoke to their educator, they had to be the initiator of it. This way, we're putting it out there so the kids know it's yet another option. In math, we just, we changed some things around to test and quiz average to certain courses. One of the things that's in here that you may have a question about pertains to taking both the mid-year and/or final. And that's only in the case of if the mid-year and the final are both half-year exams. So for example, if the mid-year teaches something different at the first half as opposed to the second half of the year, which some of our courses do. So the final exam that we take in June...
Not everybody probably knows, John, sorry to interrupt, that this is if you want to accelerate in a class.
Yes, correct, I'm sorry. So if, for example, you wanted to skip or accelerate an entire class, typically it's in the area of math, sometimes it could be in the area of science, you would need to take the mid-year and/or final exam. In some of these courses, the final is a full year cumulative exam, but in some cases it's broken up half and half. And we just want to ensure that the students have shown the skills necessary in the entire curriculum. So that's just a point of clarification there. We have, in science, we have updated some course recommendations prereqs and we also added small group physics. This would be a course that would be provided to students that provides additional support on top of the physics course that they're already taking. This is only if the numbers merit it. In a given year, we may offer it, we may not offer it. It just depends. Technology, we added TV Media 3, video game development, and then we also tweaked a couple of things with the online courses. What we did not place in here, but you will see as part of the budget proposal, is the proposal to add or to return to virtual high school and so many seats. And that's why it's not in here. If through the budget process and subsequent budget approval and town meeting approval, then we would put it in as an addendum. We didn't want to put it into the proposed program of studies because it has a budget impact, whereas these other things do not.
Doesn't adding the courses have budget impact?
No, because what we would do is any course that were added, it would just be the pool of classes they have. The resources would still be the same, the teachers.
Okay. All right. And can I ask, would then students be able, would the virtual high school be presented as something that you could sign up for or is it sort of a fallback if...
Nope, you can sign up for it.
Okay.
Absolutely. Juniors and seniors would be given the priority and I just want to ensure that, you know, prior to putting it into even a proposed program of studies, that it still has to go through the budgetary line.
So I was gonna hold off on questions.
Oh, sorry.
I love Fiona.
I agree.
Yeah, keep going. Sorry, I apologize.
Sorry.
That's okay. And really, the rest of it is just a lot of wording. Yep. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Great. Claire.
I had nothing to say about a couple of things and I was holding on. And then we started down the virtual high school, so I was like, oh.
A couple of questions, John. In the early part of, I think, the first page, it says, "Decisions as of May 1st will prevail for the 2019-2020 school year." I assume that's saying, you know, once you've signed up for your schedule as of May 1st, those are the classes you'll take. I just think prevail sort of, as the language sort of gets, will get lost on students. There might be a more approachable way to phrase that sentence.
Okay.
But I, I think I totally understand and agree that you have to have a date by which you say, "These are the classes I'm going to take." Life happens and there might be the odd instance where we have to adjust that.
Yep. To adjust the language. Yep, that's fair.
Next was, and I don't know if this is a change, not a change, in CP English to be considered for honors, you can not have a B+ in the second semester according to what I read? So you can have an A, a B+, or you can have an A minus, a B+ and an A in the final and you still don't get recommended for honors English? Did I read that correctly?
I believe the intent...
That sounded a little stark to me.
Yeah, so I do know this. So one of the...
I don't know the...
Yeah, so the history a little bit behind that and the discussion was around, and Gretchen had brought this up. We wanted to ensure that students still finish the school year strong. So what we would do is just simply monitor, like that second half of the year, they just had to have an acceptable grade. If this is, we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
So it would be that yes, if halfway through they could make it, sometimes what we do is we'll say to some students, "Let's see how you do towards the end of the year," especially if they're a little bit short, to then make it. We want to then also just hold students accountable that, you know, obviously if they're in the ballpark, we're going to put them in that class, but we don't want them to slip or just to let their grade slide to the point where...
Right, and I understand that. So the dilemma as I read that was that's so prescriptive, I think it's actually going to limit and hinder what you guys have worked so hard to do, which is encourage kids to stretch, to work harder, to do more. If you're an athlete or you're in, you know, any extracurricular and that happens to be a heavy load in the spring, so your grade is the B+ in the second semester, according to this, you don't get in to honors...
No.
...English.
Yeah, that's not what the intent of it is then, so I'll...
That's how it read to me.
Sure.
So I would suggest that the language is about maintaining your grade average and your work performance and your participation in class and all those things that make a good student rather than the actual grade. Because they could still end up with an A or an A- at the end of the year and have a few weeks or something that didn't go right or something that was really hard to understand.
Yeah, and we always make those, you know, we're always flexible with that.
Right. But how this read didn't come across that well.
I'm guessing that on one hand, you want to make it clear...
What the expectations are.
What the expectations are, but on the other hand, you don't want to lock yourself in so that a kid who has unusual circumstances is no longer eligible. And, but you also don't want to leave it so wide open that you have to police, you know, 50 students to check whether or not they were close enough. Like, did they, they may have dropped down in their homework, but their assignment quality was good or, you know.
Gretchen Donahue and I'll review this.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then another question, small group English at the senior level, we're dropping and is that because...
We just, we have not offered it for years and we work, you know, we work with students very closely that they no longer need that small group.
Great.
Yeah, and then they, it gives them access to other electives and, yeah, it's a good news story.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to highlight if that was the case. And you talked about the math issue. So is the issue that people are taking or asking to accelerate more than they have in the past or are they taking these classes elsewhere? How does one accelerate, is my question?
Yeah, so what we just want to ensure is that if they're in the middle school, that they're communicating with Mr. Kellett, that this is something they're thinking of doing and their respective middle school guidance counselor, and that they're also talking to us. So in the case of math, it would be Mr. Barudy or Mr. Hickey in history or whatever. And it's usually math or science. And that also that they're conferring with me so that we can pre-approve this because we're definitely interested in kids who are able to and are capable of doing this, to do it. You know, because if, you know, there's usually a small group of kids who really can't handle that, but we have kids that can do that. And we just want to ensure that we know in advance, because in a couple of cases, what has happened is nobody here at the middle school even knew that they were taking the course. And then they came to the high school and said, "Okay, now we also want to advance to this." And it's the first that we're hearing of it. So, you know, we just want to know in advance, it gets pre-approved and we've got, as I said, some students who are certainly more than capable of doing it. We just want to ensure that there's communication from middle to high school and the family so that when the student embarks on this, they know what it's going to mean.
Sounds good. And virtual high school, I would say that could stay in the budget and stay in the program of studies. I mean, we have a $22, $24 million budget and we have E&amp;D. I think if it didn't pass a town hall or a town meeting...
We'd make it work.
Yeah, I would say in the budget it doesn't stick out.
This would be a minor issue compared to other things.
Because ultimately, we want to make sure that the kids know, I mean, part of the success of virtual high school is clearly filling those seats and taking advantage of it.
Sure.
So we want to make sure they know right out of the gates, if not sooner...
Yep.
...than the traditional process.
I just didn't want to put it in making an assumption, more so with the regional school committee than I did so much with the community, because I thought it's important that that still be discussed. You know, I know that we had a preliminary discussion of it and there was support, but when the budget then finally comes forward, that's the real time when we look at it. It's not large dollars, but it's still something that, you know, I had to present to Andrew and Dawn as, you know, new, new resources being requested.
Maybe as the chair, you can ask everybody how they feel about it and if we have consensus when we approve the handbook we can approve that to be in there.
Okay. Judy, what do you think?
You have my 100% support just getting into virtual high school.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable because we actually was able to reduce certain areas so it wasn't a complete add in the areas. Because we were able to take some guidance money away for things that weren't being used.
To cover the costs.
To cover it so it wasn't a complete 100% add. It's very minimal in your budget.
Yeah. That's good. We encourage you to put it in the book.
Great.
Go for it.
I'm more than happy to do so. So what I'll do is I will have, I'll submit the write-up for that to Andrew and I'll have Beth review it too, because it has a curriculum focus. But they have a, virtual high school has a pretty traditional blurb about what they are and they will specify how it's going to work here at DS.
And we've used it before in the past.
We have here and I have some experience in previous districts, but yes, DS does have a history a number of years ago.
And language somewhere.
Yeah. Correct, correct. Yep.
And in the language though, would we include how we would then go about if there's more students applying than, or interested in seats available of how, juniors and seniors, how we would go about deciding who would get the...
Yeah, yeah, we have to talk about that. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, it's a lot of people and special thanks to Ellen and to Linda Getchel. Linda in the guidance office does a lot of the coordination and pulls it all together from all the department heads, so I wanted to make sure Linda Getchel received or do credit for all her work.
Thank you. And I also appreciate you coming and presenting it privately so we had time to ask questions, digest. I think that made a real difference.
No, it was an excellent suggestion and I think it is good because it eliminates some of the, like, if you just saw it for the first time now, you know, to be talking these things through as we go through, I'm happy to do so.
All right, so then can I get a motion to approve the program of studies pending the or with the addition of the virtual high school write-up, which we will see it?
And suggested modifications.
And the suggested modifications.
Yep.
Yes.
I'll make the motion. Second the motion?
All right, any discussion? On favor? Great, thank you. Motion carries.
I just want to specifically for the record, point out the thank you to the group and to the music department for providing more flexibility for students who want to be involved in band and chorus programs and also do other things. I know there's always compromises in a small high school and that's a great way to report. And I know it requires some flexibility on the part of the teachers to operate like that, so thank you.
It really does, but you know what? They are tremendous. I'm telling you, Jeff Herman is a gem on many, many fronts.
Great.
He just, you know, positive attitude, hard worker, role model for kids. That's been, that's been terrific having him on board.
Fabulous.
Which is awesome. Can I just really quickly add Janice Berry's program, The Music End, which I think is great, which is trying to say you can be involved in music and do other things and has students talk about what their "and" is. I think is awesome.
Yep.
So, thank you. Dawn, the finance and monthly operations for the month.
Yeah, so if I didn't include some things from prior months, I wouldn't have a lot to say, which I think is a good thing. So I'm leaving some of the language in there in case you forgot what I hit some last month. But obviously revenues are, have not moved and we're still projecting a little under $92,000 in chapter, chapter 70 and chapter 71, positive variance. On salaries, again, the only thing you're seeing in your athletics are our fall coaches. We're getting ready to encumber our winter coaches, so you'll see that in your next month. There are some, several positions that are vacant right now, so you might see more budget remaining than we really have. And once they're hired, that will come back. We have some custodial positions open, a couple of, one or two educational assistants open. We just, one of our IT people just left and that's, we're getting ready to hire that person. So there are some dollars out there that may look like they're positive variances, but it's just salaries waiting to be reencumbered. But other than that, we're still looking at probably right on budget for salaries, assuming that we're going to spend all of our substitute and custodial overtime. On the expenditure side, so there are two new things. We have encumbered both utilities and our employee-related insurances. On the utilities, everything's encumbered except for telephone services, so there is a little bit in there. But we're really just projecting right now to have a small operating positive variance based on our net metering credits. Other than that, our utilities, it's still early in the year right now, but sort of look like they're in line with our projections. Regarding our employee benefits, we are projecting right now a net positive variance of about $100,000. Majority of that is really coming from the employees who like the opt-out provision. We had five do that. So if you look at that in that we are giving them the opt-out payment versus the premiums we would have paid on their behalf, that's accounting for that. And then a little bit of it also is too, we have a lot, a larger movement to the high deductible plan than we thought, which, not that we didn't predict any to go, so the fact that we had so many plays into our projections. But we'll continue to monitor and update that because as you know, every day changes in the healthcare world. We just had an employee show up today who needs to be added on to our plan. So it's ever-changing. Other than that, all our other expenditures, look, so they're operating within budget. Again, I'll just remind you about the transportation, that you will see the larger positive variance there and that's because right now we're charging everything for transportation. Any questions on the monthly financial? Okay, just a couple other financial items I wanted to bring up. We were approached by Blue Wave to see if, because we have been a client of theirs, to see if we would be interested in picking up some additional net metering opportunities with the new project that they currently have underway. We'd only pick up about, we'd increase our current net metering capacity by about 25% and so really it's a small piece compared to what we have now. But I offered that I would bring it to the committee this evening and if you guys were interested, they'll keep us on the list. The project would probably be approved in the week, the next week or so. But I think that was, I love that they reached out to us to see if we were interested because we have worked with them before.
Do you know where they're putting this project?
No, I don't know the details. It's just that they're looking for people to buy into these pieces.
And we have enough consumption to balance out the equation.
Yeah, we have enough capacity to pick this up.
Is it a relevant question whether they're, where they're putting it? I mean, I feel like...
I don't think it's necessarily in town.
Right. I just wanted to know if it's sunny location basically.
Well, anything that we get would be, and they said they would, they're most likely would match our current discount, which having met with some solar groups about some other issues, the discount, we got a little bit higher discount, so I will give credit to the town of Dover for negotiating the initial Blue Wave contract because we were about 2% higher than what they actually see out there. And he said he would try to match that for us.
Would match that?
So what I'm looking at is like right now, I told you, we had like 20 to 25,000. This would be adding probably maybe 5,000 more to that on an annual basis, but when you take that over the 20 years, it could be 100,000 or so.
And the process for us would be to meet like we did last time.
I think the timing would work. The way I told him is that I could bring the proposal, hopefully it would be done, the contract would be similar language. He said he would, I was trying to give an addendum to, but because it's a different project, he has to do his own contract. It would be the same contract exactly as that you signed before or that you approved before. And it would probably work to bring it to your January meeting. It wouldn't have to be a special meeting.
Which is always good.
Exactly. So basically, I told him tonight, I was bringing it forward to see if there was interest in continuing to pursue this. Now, it may not work, but at least you, I know that I have your guys' approval to put our name on the list of the floor.
Yeah, I am interested.
Any questions about it? Any other things? All right, I think you've got the...
Okay, good. So I'll let him know and he'll keep us updated. The other thing I just wanted to let the committee know is that we are planning to acquire a replacement vehicle for the old blue van as we call it. We, you know, the initial plan was to purchase the mini van, the minibus, and let the other one ride out until sunset. But we've seen now that the other one has actually hit sunset, that it was really heavily used and we are short a vehicle. So I've had Chris Hendricks, our grounds head of grounds, do some research for us and we found several used 2018 vans that are coming off lease, three of them are like from Boston College, that we can get for about a 20% discount off buying something new. And it's my understanding, and I just have to clarify this, that we could still do the really low-cost financing, pay for it over three years. And it would be, all the pricing right now is below 30,000, so it would be less than $10,000 a year. And it's, we'd probably act on it pretty quickly because we are, we're in need of a vehicle for the math team for Pine Street. This will be, the good news on this is that time has passed and they have come up with a passenger van again that passes the safety, that's not the minibus. So it'll be more in size.
Like the old.
Like the old van, it'd be a 15-passenger, because we do have some groups that don't prefer to drive the minibus. So this will be a nice complement, I think, to the fleet and will be definitely used. And I feel pretty comfortable that we've got money in our transportation budget already from not having used Conley as much for these other vehicles, that we wouldn't see any kind of budget uptick by purchasing this for the minibus.
That's good news. Go, go team, nice used car. And do we have to have it painted or...
Well, we won't. I think the one we're really looking at is a silver one, but you do have, I guess it's required, it will have to say Dover, it'll say Dover Sherburne on the door. You have to identify if you're a municipality vehicle. So it will have some rendering, so we're not going to put like the big Raider logo.
Can I scan the license plate?
Yes. It's inert. So, but I wanted to let you know, so there was a new, exactly, vehicle coming that you knew where that was coming from.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that because they've been having students have to drive to some of these after-school activities.
Yes, the van quickly became out of commission and we realized.
We were in a borrowed time.
Yeah, so.
Well, I appreciate the frugal nature of the region that you used up your car until it actually died.
Yeah.
And also, it's time to buy a new car.
Well, not new, new to us.
New to us.
Yeah, all right.
Can I ask one? Have we finished our...
Let's just really quick, are you, are you done with your stuff?
I'm done with your monthly report, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so go ahead.
So of the million one, you think you're gonna have... So of the million one, you think you're going to have a six-point, just a hundred thousand related insurance? But you'll encumber the rest of the millions on expenses likely?
Okay, so you're asking, oh, the million that's left on that? Oh, so no, some of that, so we still, and all these other items are still operating. We don't encumber everything. So, no, so a lot of this is like supplies. And when the second semester starts, all the classes are going to be ordering their next supplies. That's all in these numbers.
Right, so you'll likely encumber.
So they'll, oh yeah, yeah, we'll definitely spend more.
So what's the hundred that year? The insurance, the health insurance?
Oh, that's, well, that's only coming from the two lines here, yeah.
That's mine.
Yeah.
And do the trucks, the vehicles go through capital at all?
This one, well, no, because we'll, we're going to just purchase it outright with our money. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to, in the interest of time and since we're not going to vote on the AC recommendations, do you think we could just, can we, we have to, we don't have to vote on that in January. If we have questions, or if we have questions, we could bring them. I know you've got some questions.
I've got some questions. We can add them to January.
I think we can, I mean, the budget's still, it's still working at that time.
Yeah, so because the AC recommendations do impact the budget, we figured that we wouldn't vote. We have to put that within context to the budget, so we can ask them in January.
And that's because at seven o'clock, we have the other meetings.
In the interest of time. So then I'd like to go back to Dawn. Do you have, have you had a moment?
We're going to have answers back.
I'm just going to start, okay.
I'm going to go very quickly. But you'll note that the budget that we put forward for your review, again, it's, this is the first round, very early in the process, that it is level service or reduced expense, which was the guidance from Warren, also level. And whereas the guidance from Sherburne was level funded, with the exception of a two percent increase for salaries. That is going to be tougher for us to meet. But I had advisors also set aside four hundred thousand for establishment of departmental guidance reserve, which, there was another word for it used last year, we're not using that one anymore, begins with a P.
The P, yeah.
I think of it that way. So we really feel like this is a, is a good budget. It's, it comes in with an increase, a total increase of six hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which is a two-point-six-two percent increase. But at this stage, that's actually a good place to be in. And just for comparison purposes, if you remember last year, we started at this time with a three-point-seven-seven percent increase. And that was only year two of the contract, this is year three. So this is the tougher year of the contract and it was ultimately approved at two-point-one-one. So we, again, want to emphasize that we're still working on this. We feel like we're coming in a good place. There is no new staffing in this budget, other than what would be required for student, to meet student IEPs. And so that also is always in flux mode. And then also, because we, you remember with the bridge program in transitioning through the years, this is year three coming up, we begin to own more of the cost. I think it's really important to just point out that ninety-eight percent of this, as it says in the summary, ninety-eight percent of our additional request of the six hundred and forty-four thousand is actually contractual salary obligations. So for the second year in a row, we'll have no healthcare increases. That, I think, is a very big deal. And, you know, just a credit to the employee benefits committee's work last year with Dover and with the teachers' union. That was a really positive experience, I think, for all involved. And I, and I've gotten nothing but frankly, good feedback from people about how it's working out. So that was a really positive thing for us and it was important to point out. The other important piece to point out is obviously the special ed review. This thing we'll talk about in our joint meeting is really about the administrative structure. But we'll also talk about the programming itself. And that report is due from the consultants in the next week or so, and we'll present that in January. So there may be some costs associated with that. We need to put that out there, just to make it clear. But we also are thinking creatively all the time, that if something were to come forward, what could we do differently to use existing funds? So there may in fact be no cost if we do have to make changes to our program. So that's kind of in limbo, so it's important to make a point of that. And... But we're, the, on the OPEB question, again, this, the employee benefits committee is still working on it. But, but no funding would be requested from the town if we were to put in some funding for OPEB. So that's important for the town sites to know. And then on the revenue side, as usual, chapter seventy, seventy-one, state aids, based on our FY nineteen actuals, because we don't know the FY twenty figures yet. And those won't be released until mid to late January and it can actually fluctuate beyond that, depending on, you know, what it eventually settles on. But, and then as it's pointed out here, we've allocated a hundred thousand of excess E and D for, in this initial budget, which is representing the additional state funding to be received over FY nineteen budgeted figures. So that's it in a nutshell. I know we're very pressed for time, but, so I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to ask us any questions you have about it. Again, just need to point out, we're really just getting started on this. But you do need to take action tonight to approve this initial one, so that the towns know that, you know, this is our starting point.
Right, so tonight's budget, Judy, is just, this is our first pass and it meets the Sherburne filings. The other interesting thing to point out is in tab three, I believe, Dawn? The assessments point?
Yes.
The fifty-six-point-six.
So there was a one-point swing.
Sherburne is forty-three-point-three-seven, based on the formula in the regional agreement.
Right. And how is that compared to last year?
So there was a one-point swing to Dover from Sherburne.
Okay.
Just for those who didn't hear in the back, tab three is what you're looking for, for the percentage on the regional assessment between Dover and Sherburne. That first, first block on the design, up at the top. And the other thing I just wanted to raise was, I believe it was in Sherburne's maybe advisory information, was the joint meeting between Dover and Sherburne and the region. It had a date of February thirteenth, which I think is two weeks earlier than we normally do it. So, we, I think we have a date of the twenty-something, but I believe in Sherburne's information, I read February thirteenth. So if we could just check that.
I think Dover, Warren, is the one.
Oh, the Dover? Dover's officially changed, but it got changed after the, so you notice I did remember to change Dover's.
Oh, okay.
Well, I just read it somewhere, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, I've got this.
It's a red flag, let's confirm the correct date.
Yeah, so it says tentative in Dover's, but now it's set to be, we confirmed with Dover.
Is it the Wednesday, the?
It's the twenty, yeah.
The twenty-seventh?
Or something, whatever that month is. I should have changed that one, I'm sorry. I caught chikering, but it's not, so.
Okay. I just, because I know people then start to pick their schedules for.
We need to look ourselves for.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we'll get the dates. It would be helpful just to sort of have the dates.
Yeah, so twenty-seventh is the Wednesday.
So that's just Dover, not?
No, it's Dover, Sherburne.
Sure, that's the big night we think. You guys will be doing that Tuesday night and then Wednesday night we get together with all.
And they have it in their schedules.
Yeah.
One last time, February twenty-fifth.
February twenty-seventh.
So for the regional school, we are meeting, we are spending the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh with you. And twenty-seventh is the big meeting.
Exactly.
Gotcha, thank you.
Replicating last year.
Fabulous, my favorite.
Yeah, so I will send out this update on the dates, because there are a lot of things coming up. There are a lot of dates and I think that some of them still we've set as tentative. But it's better to get on the calendar and remove it than...
Rather pencil it in and remove it.
Yeah, and remove it.
Than not have it.
We don't have any capital dates with either town set up yet for any capital, so.
Hopefully you've had a chance to look at the enrollment numbers as well, which are obviously a big consideration always. So that's, that's tab four. And then obviously the capital.
Dawn, did you have any key things that you just wanted to point out that you thought would be important for us to?
In general for?
In general, it could be capital, it could be regulations.
Just to let you know, so in tab two, you have the very detailed line-by-line item. Where there was a material or significant change, we added some explanation there. You have a summary of staffing, you have your summary of anticipated grants, because that's important to see the other side. That's not built into your operating fund. Do you have the detail for what's in your technology supplement, plan, line item, for the high school, for both the high school and middle school? Then you have all of your assessment calculations. So we actually show you how we calculated the, both the usage and the census. The usage is what runs the capital. You have your, your projections, your, your history and your five-year projections. A little more detailed subgroup with your ELL, your Boston and your IEPs. Then for the regions information, I did this last year and I think it's helpful, I shared with you what's in both the Dover and the Sherburne's budget for added district, because there you can see what student counts are in sort of year six through twelve, to get an idea of what is out of districts in, for students who would be here, if not out of district. So that's, I think, important for you guys. And then you have your class size survey for both the middle school and the high school.
Always interesting.
I want to thank John and Scott for getting those to us. So we've had the time to take a look at those and anticipate where our most significant needs are.
Right, so I think it's helpful to spend some time. And as we've done in the past, any questions you have can be funneled through your chairs.
And do we have a deadline for those? I know.
Right, so your meeting is the second full week we come back from break, so probably...
We meet January, we meet January eighth.
Right, so which is that's the first full week we come back. So if you could get them to us, probably by, what, our pack will have to go out that Friday? So maybe like for Christmas? Yeah.
So, okay, by December, okay.
December...
Twenty-eighth?
I'm going to kiss the Friday.
All right, so twentieth, okay.
And then we cut it off your plate for the holidays, too.
And we can put it on yours.
Thank you, so this, this budget book was fantastic, so thank you. Very organized, had a lot of questions.
Do the slides here. And let me just go over capital, so we're not asking for a capital vote tonight, because we still have some projects in flux. And we want to make sure that we're doing this in the best possible way. So just to highlight a little bit, we are considering moving the roof to two thousand twenty-one for a couple of reasons. One is we're really still trying to investigate MSBA funding. Right now, we don't qualify for MSBA funding, because we're asking to redo the roof before their, their timeframe is. So I want to explore that a little bit more and see if it's worth holding on, if we'd be eligible to apply for MSBA. We've also got the thing, the situation where we've got multiple, where if some media makes sense, there's some MSBA funding to sort of do a package deal and that would make, that would streamline that whole process if we do. So, and we are looking at solar opportunities. So we've been doing a little bit of groundwork, but I don't think we're going to have this all sealed up and ready to go to ask for capital funding for fiscal year twenty. So consider that highly probable, that when we come back in January, that one's going to be moved off to a future year. The other item that we're investigating too is the common area lighting upgrades for LED. If you look above you, you're sitting in a pilot project right now. So if you look at these lights compared to, this is a work in progress, right? So we actually, what happens, there's a program right now, incentive program through Eversource, where we're getting all the lights for free and all we're paying for is the labor. They have to come in and do an audit and make sure that the savings that we're going to get from the LED is worth their while to give us the fixtures. So this was our trial project here. If this works well, we may even just piecemeal and get these projects, you know, get, because they can't give you a lot of stock at once. But we can work our way through and we can cover the labor within our operating budget on a, you know, over maybe a two- or three-year program. So we're, like I said, we're trying this out and we're going to see how it goes. We may come back to the committee and say we can retrofit all of the common area lighting within our operating budget and get it done over the next two or three years. So that is another thing that we're considering. The other things that are on here, the mower is a definite. The classroom floors, we do need to start doing those as they come up. I noticed that we've moved the kitchen floor forward a year to twenty versus twenty-one. We ran into some issues this summer when we went to sort of rehab that floor. It really does need to be done. And so we moved that to two thousand twenty. And the phone system, so we've, we did that, so Chikering has a newer phone system. We did Pine Hill this summer and now it's the region's time to do it. The good news on that is that it probably will qualify for some E-rate reimbursement, so that what you have to do though, is you have to ask for the whole amount, but then the rebate money would come in after, so we could use it and apply it to something else. In fact, some E-rate money that Sherburne got on another project is how we paid for the phone system last go-around. The beauty of this phone system though, is that we can pick up the phone and we can call, we'll be able to call Chikering or Dover just by, or Dover, Chikering or Pine Hill by just that extension. And it will update some of our equipment. So that's, that's an exciting venue. The skylights is another one that I'm mentioning that I think we'll probably push off. We've been looking at them, we really don't see any need to replace them. So that would be a project that comes off onsite inside, right? But when we look at it, it may not be timed right. So that one looks like it'll get pushed off. We will be doing the split AC condenser though, it's the last older unit that's in the middle school. In previous years, you would noted that we had the sound and lighting system. As you know, we did a big lighting upgrade with the gift from the MUDG. And we're looking at the sound separately, but I think in these times, we'll probably try to use outside resources for the sound. So we wouldn't be asking the towns to fund that through operating capital. And the water storage team, as I mentioned, we did the study. And the findings that came back on that is there's really no capital improvement that needs to be done. There's some maintenance and we'll just work through that in our operating budget. And the bleachers is another thing that we keep talking about, but we've decided to say that we will review the bleachers, look at it, but we could probably, again, come up with other operating, not other operating, but some other...
Other sources, yeah.
For that. So two thousand twenty, right now, with everything that we have listed there is a million one. If we take off the larger item of roof, we're down to three oh six. We might tweak a few other things. So what I'm seeing is that we potentially wouldn't have to ask the towns for capital and we would use the money that we set aside last year. So, I'm right there. Please tell Steve that, that was his request. But I think that would be, that's actually, that wasn't planned that way, but it's almost going to be perfect.
And that might allow you to get some possibility of getting MSBA to help us with that?
Yes, exactly. There's a program called accelerated repair program that the application for fiscal year twenty doesn't even come out until January. But that's where they set the guidelines, but we've been trying to do some research just to make sure what, who we, one of them will qualify, is it need-based or is it just project-based?
Okay.
And then what are, they changed the, sort of the guidelines for applying every year. So they're tightening them up a little bit, because there's more people asking. So they keep raising the, the lights of things before you can replace them.
Right.
So that's where we're waiting to see what comes out, but I think that's, you know, could potentially be forty percent.
Now, one question about roofs is, I know we've had roof problems.
Nothing, nothing that would, is an emergency.
Okay.
So I would love if, I know that people are going to have a lot more questions, but in the interest of time. But thank you so much, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, I know it's been a ton. So thank you, so can I?
I want a motion to approve the proposed twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, operating capital budgets to be sent to that panel.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? A motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Can I also then add a motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, no, oh, sorry. Sorry.
To approve the sentence, which I'm...
All right, thank you.
And could the minutes, Amy, reflect the names of the field groups and the names of the donors from the motion?
In the motion?
Yeah, because they're not here. There's no way for anybody to go back and figure out what got approved.
Yeah.
Oh, I think, yes, yes, yes.
Thanks.
You mean for this time, not for last?
Yeah.
Yeah, for this time, all right. Do I hear a second discussion? Vote, whatever. Vote, whatever.
All in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you to all those for donation.
Yes, thank you for donations, so we've done the consent agenda, good communications.
Town report?
Town reports for the next time?
No.
Is you?
Yes. So I, as a secretary, I have to write the town report, which, haven't done yet. When I do, I will share it with everybody. Then you get me comments back, and then it goes to Cheryl.
Awesome. Thank, I'm so glad that you do that.
Yeah, me too.
Yay. Alright, now can I adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. Motion to adjourn?
Okay. Oh, made.
Second. All in favor? Alright, thank you, thank you. Sorry, that was a little bit rushed at the end, trying to get that out.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. And, John, thank you, I love the stuff that you write on the side to explain, it's so helpful. So, thank you.
I read it, and I knew I'd pulled it up in preparation.
But it's gotten better and better, it's like more and more, like you've sort of figured out what it is, the reason we really need time. So you anticipate our questions tomorrow.
It started with stomach pains, and now it might be a little social emotional, just going into it.
Don't yourself.
I know, I'm fine. I just, at the end, my brain is essentially...
It started the...
It's okay.
Happy birthday!
Yay!
One second, the clock. Have you a miracle?
My eleven-year-old is gone. And had I not gone, she'd be... Good. She's...
If you want to swap, I'm very happy to do that.
I know, right? I'll sit wherever you want. Hi!
Hi!
For a long time.
No, I'm older.
I'll swap. Are you sure?
Yeah.
At least he's festive, excited.
He works.
That's happening now.
I saw.
Having, like, doing a renovation...
I think we have everyone that we need. I'd like to call to order our joint school committee on December fourth, 2018, starting at seven fifteen. I believe we have a quorum from all three committees.
We have the same...
Amy, is that there? Yep. So I would like to call to ask if there's any community comments? Hearing none. The first item on our agenda is discussion around the special education administrative reorganization. Just quickly, for those of you that may or may not remember, this is a continuation of our previous meeting from October twenty-third, where we had our consultant review of our current special ed program. It gave us an opportunity to hear the presentation, ask questions, provide feedback from community members as well as school committee members. Andrew and his team took a lot of our comments and questions, and has done some follow-up, which we truly appreciate, so there are some adjustments and some considerations and some comments that we have in our packets that everyone, I'm sure, has had a chance to review. And in doing so, I'd like to turn it over to you, Andrew, to give us a review, please.
Okay, okay. So, hello, everybody. We essentially went back and took a look at the proposal that was put forward, and I want to just kind of refresh folks' memory, and those at home as well. The proposal that was brought forward was to change our director of special education pre-K to twelve to a director of student services pre-K to twelve. And out of that conversation, you'll recall, there were questions about kind of the org chart, and was it specific enough? There were questions about the job descriptions of the people in that org chart, and there were questions about the cost. And so what we put forward to all of you is a revised org chart, job descriptions for the positions contained in there, and that, in fact, that cost analysis. The feedback, I think the concerns that we were hearing that night and since then, were that people were worried that a director of guidance and counseling for pre-K to twelve might be too expansive. So that was one of the questions. Another question that came up, both in the school committee feedback and feedback within the school community, was will this position, this individual in this director of student services, be able to provide that direct supervision that we, that's called for, that the consultants recommended, that this direct supervision really of special ed across the board? Will this person be able to do that if they're spread covering student services, including counseling, and guidance and counseling, and nursing? That was a big question mark. Another question mark was whether there would be adequate team chair coverage at the region. So what we, what we have come forward with and what we're proposing as part of this proposal now, is that our director of guidance was a six, that's a six-twelve position currently, but de facto does some coordination of guidance and counseling at the elementary levels. But it's not clearly stated that that's something that should be done, and so it kind of happens, it happens, but we're, I think, as a system, we're leaving a little too much to chance there. So we're proposing that the existing guidance director be a director of guidance and counseling with the kind of oversight, the direction setting from pre-K to twelve, but the direct supervision at the six through twelve, which is what is currently happening now. So it's really about just making sure that the coordination is actually insisted upon. And so...
Should we hold our questions to the end, or should we do, as we hit each point?
I think it would, it's just easier, because I might lose my train of thought, unless you just have to...
You're jumping out of your seat, Brooke, feel free.
I'm all caught up.
There's only, there's only so much you probably have for lung capacity, so use it properly.
So this is a, this is a really important point. We just want to make sure that there's that connection, the continuum is not broken up. You know, six through twelves is covered by a director, but pre-K to five is really the principal's responsibility to supervise that. And we really think that our, frankly, our, we're talking about individuals, our director at six through twelve has this capacity, has demonstrated it, has already been calling meetings together to try and make sure that there is coordination, but it's, she doesn't have the authority, frankly, to insist upon it. And so that's really all it's about. It's not about the direct supervision of the individuals at those schools at the elementary level, that supervision will still be done by the principal, but the principal would certainly get feedbacked from the director if necessary. That director would, would report to the director of student services. This is important, because the director of student services now is linking, I know that Debbie Dixon has done a very nice Venn diagram that demonstrates how special education, guidance and counseling, and nursing truly overlap, and it's really important that one person identify those places where they overlap. So we're, we're seeing this, this position of a pre-K to twelve director of guidance and counseling as one that, that would work really on the team of the student services kind of department, for lack of a better word, but under the supervision of the director of student services. So there's a link with the principals, there's a link with the district-wide central office person. I think that's really, really, really important. And we're, we're suggesting that the title actually be not just director of guidance, because counseling is actually a huge part of what we're doing, and there could be more counseling services if the trends around social emotional learning continue. So it's important that, that we have that kind of expertise in that role. So that is one of the solutions or suggestions that we're bringing forward as part of the concerns that were put forward. The second one is that when we looked at the proposed model, although we liked very much that, that the team chair model that we had put forward for the region was going to have some overlap between the middle and the high school to help with that transitioning, we still think that that leaves the high school under that proposed model with point five FTE of team chair, and it was point five of essentially the out-of-district coordinator. So the out-of-district coordinator responsibilities, again, based on what the consultants told us, would be point five. So they were suggesting that that could be, we don't need that full one-point-oh for out-of-district services based on our ratios. So we were going to take half of that and apply it to a team chair at the region. We've heard feedback about that, we've heard concerns about that, and we are proposing that the, that we actually add a point five FTE at the region. So you'll see that in the cost analysis. This is, this is really about addressing that question of, will there be ample supervision of special education decision-making in these two buildings, the middle school and the high school? Because those team meetings, as you know, are hugely important, a lot of very important decisions get made there, a lot of important communication takes place there. So this was about addressing that and not leaving something to chance. It also is about ensuring that the director of student services has ample people working for him or her in that, in that, at that level. So on the, at the elementary level, we have a direct coordinator of special education with a team chair who works with that person. They, works kind of under the guidance of that person. At the region, we have two team chairs who work under the guidance of the director of student services. So we thought that that helped to address some of those concerns. And then the other piece that was related to that question of whether or not the director of student services would be able to, I guess the concern might, just to put it out there, people were concerned that would a director of student services really provide that supervision, that kind of touch time, that face time at the middle and high school? Being kind of a central office, pre-K to twelve position, would they do that? And we believe that they would, because they have a coordinator covering all of special education at the elementary level. But just the same, we put in that, we're proposing that director of guidance thing, and we're also specifically stating in the director of student services' job responsibilities that that is a specific responsibility. So it can't be left to chance, it's part of their job. So the job descriptions, I want to thank Debbie Dixon for her considerable time and energy on those and input into this process. They've, they've, they've really been thought through. I happen to believe that in systems where administrative leadership breaks down, and where everybody's kind of pointing like, what happened? It has a lot to do with not being clear about what people's responsibilities are. So the job descriptions, to me, are really about making sure it's crystal clear about who's responsible for what. There's no more opportunity to say, I don't know whose responsibility that is, it was once this person's, and now it's that person's, it's all clearly delineated, so there should be consistency. Because remember, part of the concern around special education is consistency as a pre-K to twelve system with really three entities. How do you ensure that consistency? And we believe that these, these mechanisms and these steps will, in fact, ensure that consistency. So that's, that's really what we put in front of you. In terms of the cost analysis itself, I realize that when we came forward originally, we said that this would be cost neutral, and in adding, at the region, in adding that point five FTE, there is some cost associated with that, but I would like to ask that the committee members remember that this is not about a short-term cost-saving initiative. This is about ensuring that our kids get the best services possible, it's about ensuring that our kids are getting the services that they need, so that the parents believe their children are getting the services right here in-house, and do not start requesting that their kids go to other systems outside for, at a great expense to the system. And, and I happen to believe that when those, when these things are in place, long-term impact is not, is most importantly on the students, but the secondary benefit, and an important benefit, is that we will be more cost-efficient. So this is in part of really two, three different categories within the strategic plan. It's, it's certainly related to our teaching and our programming of that first strategic goal, the innovative teaching. It's about our teaching. It's also about student and staff wellness, and making sure that people, staff aren't wondering who's responsible for what, that's stressful. It's about making sure that our kids have the right services, and it's also about being efficient with the limited funds that we have. So that's the rationale for it. It's important to note on the cost analysis that these figures are tricky, because we don't know necessarily who will be in which position. We could have internal candidates, for example, apply for the special ed coordinator position, leaving one position and going to another. We could have a veteran person apply for one of these positions and be deemed the best person for the position at coming at a greater expense. We could have somebody apply from, who's at the lowest, lower levels of experience, and therefore come in at a lower cost. We want the best people, and so that these numbers, they have to be looked at with that lens, because it's just not that concrete. We, we don't know who our candidate will be, included a range on there. I don't believe that you need to vote on a range tonight, I believe you would need to vote on a range when the decision was to come forward with the recommended candidate, and that's a step that we don't want to miss at that time, but that is a step that should be considered, but I believe that's important. I'm trying to think if there are other things there. So that's really where we are, am I missing anything?
The other thing we haven't looked at yet that will play into the cost is we haven't looked at the support staff underneath, the admin assist for this department, so that could have an impact. Also that, you know, we're thinking might have some cost savings, because we're more centralizing and consolidating our operations, definitely in the special ed world. So if this goes forward, that would be our next step, to go down and look further to how the, sort of the office staff would work in the new structure.
Is the director of guidance and counseling expected to take on the new pre-K through five responsibilities without additional pay?
So, at this time, we think that, that we can make that work. The, additional responsibilities is kind of a tricky term, because we're not really talking about adding supervisory responsibilities, and we're really not talking about adding a dramatic amount more of work, it's really just about empowering the person to insist upon these meetings taking place so that there's that constant exchange of information, as opposed to saying, hey, anybody want to meet? That's really the only difference. And, and that is a, you know, a pretty well-funded position currently, so I think it's within the range.
So just quickly, because I do want to open up to questions and comments, which I know we have, but one thing I do want to note, unlike our last meeting, is... we have, but one thing I do want to note, unlike our last meeting, is there's intended action at the end to entertain a motion to take into consideration a reorganization for the director of special.
Student services.
Thank you. Director of student services. So just as a reminder, towards the end, that's where we're going to go to consider it. But just want to put that out there because we didn't do that last time.
Which we need approval of, obviously.
Obviously, yeah. Yep, yep.
Sort of a clarifying question. In the proposed structure, I know we're potentially reorganizing the people thing, but under nursing services, do we currently have a person who holds a job of director of nursing services? For the whole district?
We do have a nurse leader.
Yeah. But there's like, there seems to be a thing over here of nursing services. Would that, above that, would that be held by a person who oversees all the nurses?
No, the nursing services is essentially that big bubble above that is all of our nurses kind of together. And the nurse leader, that maybe is...
Is the person. That's okay. Just the way I read it was also looked.
Yeah.
So the top buckets are more of like a category?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Like that, out of district, and then the people are underneath.
Fantastic.
These diagrams are actually pretty hard to make.
I was going to say, it might be helpful as you make the diagram. Because some of them, some of them represent human beings and others represent sort of departments. It might be helpful as you go forward to sort of make it clear when a human being occupies the thing, but that's all.
Is that in the superintendent's job description? Probably. Should be able to.
It's in everybody's job description.
So yes, just to clear things up, those are the categories. And then the person who's overseeing those categories is underneath that.
There's half a person there, two people there, one person there and one there.
So one of the things that I think needs to be made clear on that chart, and I'm glad you brought this up, Maggie, is that the out of district coordinator shows up as a .5 FTE. That's for the out of district coordination. The other portion of that out of district coordinator is .5 of the 2.0 region team chairs.
Right. Okay. Oh, that's important to know.
The further that point is, just on the point of out of district coordinator, you know, presently, that position is a 1.0 for those activities.
Yes.
Is the reallocation of .5 and .5 based on the present load of out of district rather than some projection of a decrease in the future?
It is based on the comparisons. So comparative...
Present comparisons.
Present comparisons of Dover Sherbournes numbers and of outplaced students in comparison to other school systems and their numbers. And that was the recommendation of the consultants, that our numbers were not high enough to warrant the full 1.0.
Is out of district person, I can't remember, Don, is that, is that position in the contract?
It's a teaching position.
It is. It is teacher, yeah, it's in the educator contract, the out of district coordinator. It is a recognized position.
Reading this and reading our regional school committee report about K to 12 positions, has anyone, and I'm hoping the answer is yes, thought and got their head around the contract-related issues of changing job descriptions, of pay, of, you know, some K to 12 positions are stipend, some are in the contract, some are out of the contract. There's a lot of issues there that potentially lead us into a black hole. And I know at the region, we have stepped into that black hole without intentionally doing so. So, you know, some of that's legal, some of that is union, some of that is perception.
Right. So I have had conversations with Laura McGovern from DSEA about these positions. And from my perspective, the out of district coordinator is a teaching position with the benefits that come with a teaching position in our system, and so are the team leaders. So I don't see that as a dramatic change. The discussion about the pre-K to 12 guidance director, it was, the goal is to ensure that that continuum is maintained, that that consistent communication is maintained. So I see it as different than the...
Well, that position isn't in the contract, correct? That's an administrative.
That's an administrative. Right. So that's, that's correct. Yeah, that's a separate issue.
And the elementary coordinator will be outside too. That's going to be an administrative position. It's not in the contract.
But the elementary team chair would be a...
The elementary team chair is already, I mean, they're not really in that, they're, they operate under the contract.
Okay.
They're not officially recognized in the...
Okay, but they operate under the teacher's contract.
Yes, they're hired as an educator.
Is there any language, and maybe we should, that about like needing to negotiate change in work conditions or anything like that? That's not in here.
That's...
Okay. Okay.
The other comment I had was on most shared positions that have been advertised, the school committee will set a range prior to posting the job description.
Yeah, I have that to me next to.
Yeah, so I think the plan was to bring forward to the committee at your joint meeting in January, sort of a timeline for if this moves forward, a search process and that would be a range of salaries for school committee to approve of that and to agree.
And because director of guidance, pre-K to 12 is a new position, are we posting that position?
We would probably post that position. Because that's the formal process. That's right. Because it's a new position. We, yes. The other positions, at least in my preliminary conversations with Laura McGovern, the team chair positions aren't really changing because they're just team chair positions.
We are, and I've already had two team chairs.
Yes.
I had a question about the director of guidance and counseling. How does that, this change potentially affect caseloads for the other guidance counselors? Because in the job description, it says supervises a student caseload as needed. I didn't know what this person's responsibilities are now and if it would be burdensome to the addition, if we'd have to think about adding staff.
So, well, the caseloads that they're supervising as needed, which I don't believe there is a caseload currently for the guidance 612 director, but it's strictly related to 612.
Right.
So it's not taking on caseloads at the elementary level.
Right.
Where we have frankly, staffing, I believe is sufficient. That's another thing that may need to be looked at at some point is, you know, kind of what are the roles of our guidance counselors versus psychologists? That's actually more part of the programming conversation, I believe, for January. But in terms of the administrative structure itself, that shouldn't factor in hopefully into your decision because the caseloads that the guidance director is currently responsible for won't shift.
Okay. So can I just say, I believe that the current regional guidance person has had middle school students in their caseload in the past. That may not be now, but...
Not a 6 to 12.
Ellen has had, when Lana was in middle school, she had some middle schoolers.
But that might have been for a particular...
Well, so it could have been for a particular reason. I'm just, so I'm saying that there has been time when she has had people, so that it's been flexible.
You need that language just in case, and that's why it was in there. That language was actually already in there. But it's important to note also that the guidance counseling ratios are pretty good for Dover Sherbournes. I have to assume that you added...
We did.
And that's what probably allowed her to take that caseload off if there was one because the numbers are pretty good in comparison to area districts.
That was purposeful.
Yeah, that which makes sense.
As a region person, I will say I'm uncomfortable with the expenditure because I know there's more to come and I know there's pressure on us to have our budget be at less. So I'm just laying that out there. I know it will be up to the administration to make that all work.
There's more to come because of the programming piece or there's more to come because of this?
Well, because we're up 27,000 here. I'm hearing, you know, there might be more admin support needed. And then there's possible programming implications, so...
I think what Don was saying is that there might be less admin support.
We're looking at admin reduction.
Okay.
Yeah.
I heard that the other way down, sorry.
Because we're centralizing, because we're so decentralized sort of right now, you know, we're going to look at all the admin positions and we're centralizing. So we're anticipating there to actually be some cost savings from that layer that will add to this and bring it back to be budget neutral.
Maybe, Debbie, maybe you could talk just a little bit for the committee members about centralizing special ed and what you've seen in the systems that you've been in in terms of centralizing sped. What is meant by that?
In my experience, the, all of the position, all of the districts that I've worked in have had centralized IEP and special ed process, meaning that all IEP files are maintained in a central location. The IDPs are processed and signed at a central location and sent from a central location. Right now, each building manages that. And as a result, there can be some challenges in maintaining the process and procedure and sort of overseeing. If I, for example, if I want to look at a student file, I need to go to the building to find that file. There's also an IEP software program that we can access. It would be best maintained by a central location, so it's consistent throughout all of the districts and the region. Right now, they're different, they're programmed differently for each district. So just little things like that that make it a bit more streamlined. I think streamlined efficiency and oversight improved by centralizing.
Brooke, now you have some questions, were they answered or...
I've got them answered, but first of all, thank you for all the thought that's been put into this from Dorsey Yearley onward because you have all really taken the time to answer our questions. It's clear that there's been a lot of thought and time put into this. And I appreciate the goal. I was fortunate to be in a meeting on Friday, a JAC meeting with Debbie, and she presented a very informative presentation on this issue and was able to assure us that even though this position, this new student service position seems superhuman to me and all it entails, that it's something that is actually doable and to have direct experience. In February, I think you said. When asked, I think I asked you what potential pitfalls might face moving to this kind of model, and it was very clear that, you know, clear expectations and clear delineation of job roles and responsibilities, like we talked about, is going to be critical to make this work. So we need to emphasize that going forward. I guess my only concern, you did touch on, was the, well, it is a big concern, is the director of guidance moving to a pre-K position. We know that already that is a gargantuan job, just 6 through 12. And I, I think you're saying that this is more in a name-only type of situation and these things are happening anyways and will be formalized, but I just want to make sure we keep an eye on the feasibility of this and make sure that we offer support if and when that's needed in that case. That concerns me.
Well, that's, I don't want to say it's in name only because it just feels as if we're just kind of throwing something at it, but...
Help me understand and then...
Well, because, because really, I don't like the term, but it is somewhat in name only. Because the work that she's doing is the work, the work that this person will be doing in this role is the work that the guidance director at 612 was doing anyhow. It's just formalizing. It's formalizing it and it's ensuring that there's, if you think about it now, the guidance director works directly for the principal at the middle school and the principal at the high school. And what this job description is saying is that the guidance director works underneath the student services director with input at those two levels, for sure, as to how he or she is doing at those levels because that's where the direct services are and that's where she directly superv, she or he directly supervises. But the, the real purpose is mostly about making sure that it's falling under this umbrella of student services, so that there is some direct supervision from somebody who has knowledge of those three pieces of the Venn diagram, of the nursing and the overlap of nursing and special ed and the overlap of special ed with nursing and with guidance slash student, student...
Guidance and counseling.
Sorry, counseling. I just thought that was going to add something.
No, I had a chance to sit down with the current director of guidance, 612, and go over the job description with the fine two code, just to make sure that it was up to date with what she's currently doing and that from her perspective, just as Debbie assured you at the guidance advisory meeting, that it's doable. And she really only had two questions. One, how often will I be meeting with the pre-K through 12 staff? You know, is it weekly? I said absolutely not. It's the monthly meetings you already have. It's just making sure that those folks come from all four schools. And she said, what about the hiring piece? And I said, you know, we have one guidance counselor at Hickory and one guidance counselor at Pine Hill. And if and when those guidance counselors ever leave, it would be great to have you sit in on the search committee or, you know, one of the steps in the process.
Which is probably would have happened.
It might have been. So she said, oh, so those two changes? And she's totally comfortable and feels like it's doable and natural.
It would typically be the principal for the guidance counselor at the elementary school because of site-based management. So this is ensuring that there's a conversation, so we don't lose sight of that thread.
Okay. No, that's helpful.
It's, the thread has to always be running through. And that's a really important piece whenever you're doing kinds of something complex. I remember, in fact, in writing my dissertation, that was something that we were taught. You need to maintain the thread back to your big overarching questions. And this is about maintaining the thread of guidance and counseling services all the way through from pre-K up.
One question, one that you said that, Andrew. Don, are you proposing to us how we will charge back both those positions?
Yeah, so over in the, we see the split, so the director of student services would stay the way we have director of special ed right now, so it's the third, the third, the third with .34 going to the region.
Right.
The elementary coordinator is split between the two elementary regions.
But, and the guidance, what happens to that one?
The guidance, we haven't, we haven't formally put anything in the guidance. It would be really minimal. What would get charged to the elementaries based on the responsibilities? So, I mean, I don't even know.
Well, for example, is that something that we need to pass on though? Or is that something that...
In the past, we voted on the allocation. Because you have to agree to take that cost. We pay it out of our, the big bucket, and we usually pay the benefits for K to 12 positions.
The reason we didn't factor that in is because it's essentially what the person's been doing for the past number of years.
The guidance, yeah. I don't think we've been...
But it's a K to 12 position that the region's paying 100% for. As a region person, I have to say that, Andrew.
No, I understand that, but I'm...
I mean, if anything, we'd probably take a .1 and split it between the two elementary schools, so it'd be .05. It's, because it's really, I mean, that's, it's...
It's probably, it's actually probably... It's probably, it's actually probably less than that.
Point oh, I mean, point, point one.
Point one of a 1.0, I didn't, I wouldn't say it's a point one of a 1.0. It's probably less than that. That's exactly why we didn't, that's why we didn't do it. Because it's probably more like a point zero, zero, three.
So then we're back to it's a position in name only because it's really K to 12, but it's.
But I do want to say that I think as a person who thinks of those schools and systems, I think that the addition of the name only, whether or not there's a cost associated or not, is actually important, especially in a place with regional districts. Because you don't have the same degree of oversight in the elementary schools in terms of a thread that you do in, say, a one-town school system. And so this, for me, provides some level of contact that there's conversations happening about the guidance program or the social emotional learning program that are district-wide. And I know that a lot of the other stuff that Beth does already. But I think that having that person at the table for those conversations and having that be in our plan and on that person's job description is important. Whether it means that there's one meeting a month, I think the fact that it impels the, you know, it sounds like from what you're saying, there is some, it's optional to show up at a regional, like a whole district-wide guidance thing right now. There's no mechanism to say this is actually a meeting you guys need to go to. I think that that's important to have those processes. Because especially when we're talking about social emotional learning, continuity is pretty fundamental. If, if things are dead-ending and it's an option for a person to say, like, I don't play in your sandbox, we're different, that's not ideal to the learning of those students. I don't think anyone's arguing that.
No, no, no. No, but what I'm saying, Maggie, is that at the end of the day, whether she spends, he or she in that position, the person in that position spends five seconds or 500 hours, they're still responsible at the elementary level. So that has a financial value. It's not necessarily a time value.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind if we require there to be some financial value assigned to it, even if it's a small bit.
Well, I also think it raises the bigger question of, which is not specific to this, but is a larger issue for pre-K through 12 positions. Where do the benefits reside? Should they always reside in the region, which you're saying currently they do? Which then puts more cost. So that's something to discuss potentially. I don't know how that discussion happens, but.
They're not always. When it's a, when it's a pre-K through 12 position, it isn't always, the cost isn't always borne by the region. Because I remember when we made that point two for the Director of Fine Arts. The lion's share of, of just a point two was in the region, but there was money that was assigned to Chickering.
Because her day-to-day job was at Chickering. Her day-to, her point eight was at Chickering.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is that of that point two, there was a portion, and it was, I think it was smaller than a point five. That was a, I know it was smaller than a point five, that was a portion to each, to the, to each, just Chickering and Pine Hill. And, and so they have, I'm, I'm sure they've done that in the past.
I'm, I'm talking specifically benefits.
Okay, but what I'm saying to Claire's point is.
There's precedence.
There's precedent for that having happened before.
Could we delegate authority to determine the appropriate allocation, recognizing that it's a de minimis allocation to the superintendent? You said?
Well, it's our, it's the budget, so it's our responsibility.
Well, you can put it in the budget when you disapprove it.
And.
Right?
And we, yeah. I mean, as, as a joint committee, we have a history of discussing, how do we pay for and out of whose pockets we agree? Because we have to agree with the Dover Committee and the Sherburne Committee, this is how it's going to be paid for.
So I guess, just keep in mind, the Sherburne's budget doesn't get, I mean, the region's budget doesn't get settled until April or May. Part of the reason why we were pushing on the administrative structure the way we were was to get out in front of the curve in terms of hiring.
Yeah, I know.
And we're talking about less than point one of this position coming up this whole thing, because we've got to go through the budget process.
No, 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 it's just like the program studies. It's in the budget. It's, it's, all we're doing, Andrew, is agreeing a method of allocating the money.
And I don't think that, for, for me, I don't think that allocating that money needs to be decided tonight. Because what we're, I, I think that what we're voting on is the Director of Student Services and are we going to approve that? I think that this is just saying that, that if the, if Dover and Sherburne are going to get, you know, part of the time of that person, they should contribute to the cost.
And we're talking about guidance too, we're not talking, the position.
Yeah, exactly. It's not tied to this.
Not even the Director of Student Services position.
I, I do.
We can still move forward with this.
I do think Maggie's point about this being one of our challenges as a three-region, three-district region, it's, it's true. It's part of our challenge. And this was our attempt to kind of mitigate that bigger challenge by just saying, she's, she's been doing that. Because as a system, we've already figured out, there needs to be some communication between the region and the elementary schools. And it's already been happening. We're just simply saying it now.
Yeah, but you're changing the job title, you're saying we're going to post it. There's a cost associated with that. And it's providing services to the two towns that the region's going to pay for at the end of the day. So if, I'm not saying I'm holding up the whole works because of it, I just think we need to solve that.
Or at least look at it. And, 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 and maybe you come to us and say, we've, we've looked at it, we talked to Ellen, and it takes up an hour of her time a month. And so it's really de minimis. Okay, but we just want to know that, okay?
Well, and, and the allocation, I mean, there's been times where we've gone through and we've sat through the list of, these are the K to 12 jobs, or these are the shared positions. And they're not all shared equally.
They're all over the place.
They're all over the place.
How the dice were rolled when they were. So that's one thing that I think in the future.
I mean, this sounds like it's a bigger issue than.
We say it's a dollar amount, you know, it's not a percentage, but it's something.
It could be more as a small stipend than the two locals pay to the region for those services.
It's a cost.
A cost.
Yeah, I wouldn't call it a stipend, yes. I'd get in trouble with a contract.
Well, it's not a, she's not in the contract.
If, if anyone had a complaint, it would probably be this person who's being asked to hold meetings with these other people. So that's fine. This is an acknowledgement that we're asking this person to do that. That's fine. I, I, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, questions?
So I too would like to reflect, thanks for, I think this is a tremendous step in a positive direction for having a streamlined and coordinated focus for, for student services. I actually maybe have a flip concern around the, the financial piece that you may need to come back for more human or financial resources. And given the, the expanding and expansive nature of, of student services needs, I would encourage that if it comes up. And it's, I think this is a great kind of first structural effort. And you don't really know how things are going to play out until they're actually played out, you have people in seats and, and, and you try it. And I suspect you may find that, well, you know, this particular person is, is overwhelmed in what she or he is doing. And we might need a point five or an overall 1-0 that's distributed. And I, I would like to, to hear that if that comes up.
Fair enough. I, like, like anything we do in schools, I mean, you all know, as members of the school committee, when we look at our enrollments, for example, they add in flow. And there are, you know, you have to respond to the things that come at you. I think that this is right now. But you're right, at some point in the future, we may have to have conversations about, about things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's important, and Michael's touching on it, and I've said this to someone before, this is like an evolution, right? You know, we've come from different places in the last three, six, 12 years to where we are today. And where we are in 10, 15, 20 years, however we get there, it's not going to be linear, right? It's going to be moving, maybe you're going to be going in different directions, sometimes backwards, hopefully most of the time forwards. But the benefit of having committees that come together and can discuss items like this allows us to keep, you know, everything out there and moving the ball forward to wherever that point may be, that's improving. And again, 10, 15, 20 years. So to your point, Michael, as everything changes in our environment and in our school with our cohorts, whether it's our educators or our students, we need to understand what the needs are at the time and then adjust accordingly. So if there's anything that we need to bring to the table to add something to or subtract something from, you guys aren't bashful, nor are the building administrators. And that's when they ask, and that's when hopefully we can present to the town a compelling reason for funding, resources, whatever the case may be. So I think to echo your point, that's valid, you know, that's, it's constantly evolving. Any other questions, comments?
I have a quick before, because I assume that the next thing that is going to be for the motion now.
If we can get there.
Well, hopefully we'll get there. But so tonight, though, we're just voting on the Director of Special Education. Everything else that's below that.
Director of Student Services.
Sorry. I'm looking at the current structure, down one. Director of Student Services, we're just voting on that. Everything below that was for our information to clarify. But we're not voting on any of the other structure right now? We're just voting on having that director? Or are we voting on the entire structure?
Well, it's kind of hard to separate them after all, because in hiring this Director of Student Services who's responsible for six through 12 special education, you're changing that position. But the impact is that there's, there's the need for the special ed coordinator at the elementary levels. So in the budgets, through the budgeting process, those kind of other components will get voted, or not, if we are able to cover it within our existing costs. Because then that would be administrative.
Yeah, school committee doesn't have purview over that.
Right.
Over what?
Over the hiring of positions. I mean, we do in the budgets.
With the budget.
Yeah, so how it affects your budget is one.
That's where you have that kind of authority over those positions. So quite frankly, this sped coordinator needs to get through the budget process too.
Yeah, well, and then also then the team chairs, because certainly the region that involves a budgetary impact also, right?
But as Dawn, sorry, go ahead.
Well.
I was just going to say, as Dawn is saying, that just as tonight, when we presented the region's budget as kind of a first run, this stuff is kind of working itself through as we get closer.
Right, so I'm just trying to clarify specifically what it is that we need, that we are voting on tonight.
It's the reorganizational administrative structure, which results in the creation of a district-wide Director of Student Services.
And, and, and other such positions that are set forth in the York Charter. Because it's all one.
We don't have, we don't have any power to authorize that. We don't have any ability to authorize that. The only position we have the ability to hire and participate in is the Director of People's Services. So the motion would be to no longer hire a Director of Special Education, but to hire a Director of.
I had a suggested motion.
Great.
That I was sharing with Henry and just kind of in processing this. Based on the presented reorganizational administrative structure, the motion would be to create a district-wide Director of Student Services position to supervise and provide oversight of special education, guidance and counseling and nursing services.
So moved.
Well, I can't make the motion. Here's.
I did.
Oh, okay.
You said it, I moved it.
It's my committee.
So, but so once again, just, I really want to just make very clear, so that we are really, the budget, the things that impact the budget, we vote on with our budget.
Yes.
By voting on this, we are accepting that, understand, we're understanding that there will be some budgetary implications, but we're not voting on those implications. Right now. Okay, just want to make that clear. Does that help at all? Not really. Okay.
Can I ask a procedural question? When, saying that we do approve this, when does the position get posted and?
Fourth, in fourth of January. Oh, that's the last one, it says effective July.
Well, she's talking about the posting, the procedure.
No, posting the position.
Would that after July or?
No.
We post it in January.
Yes, thank you.
In January, after you guys meet. But this would be effective July 1st, 2019.
Right, because we have a January 15th joint meeting?
Right, but this change would be effective the next fiscal year.
Yes.
So in the January 15th joint meeting, we would prepare to have a timeline.
Okay.
In, in front of you guys. And then when it comes time to appoint someone, that would have to be done by the joint meetings, a joint meeting. And hopefully that links up with our schedule and it may not, we may, we may have to pull a meeting together.
And who's in the hiring process for this?
Will you present that to us in January? You'll present that to us in January?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to go through committee by committee, right? So in Dover, for example, we have a motion to approve creation of a district-wide Director of Student Services position to supervise and provide oversight of special education, guidance and counseling and nursing services, effective July 1st, 2019. We'll hear a second, Dover.
Second.
Sure.
I don't have to say it?
No, you can say the same motion.
Oh. I propose the same motion in Sherburne. Second, again.
Do I hear that motion from the region? Do I hear the motion?
Are you proposing that motion?
I'm inviting a motion.
I, I propose, I, I make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion with Dover? Hearing not all in favor? Unanimous.
Any discussion in Sherburne? All in favor? Unanimous?
Any discussion with the region?
I have to say that any budgetary implications, we will need to cover in our budget and according to the guidance of both towns. And that might mean we may need to make other changes within the budget. And I would like to see us resolve the allocation of the Director of Guidance in, at the January joint meeting.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to quickly say, this was with a lot of thought, and I want to thank Andrew, Dawn, the rest of the central office that was involved, and the administrative staff. You know, this took a lot of work, dedication, a little fortitude and perseverance, which is important when there's a critical item to be discussed. So it's important that we look at these items, as we've talked about this before, take on things that are important for the district and not be afraid to bring this to the committee for discussion. So I want to thank you and everyone involved for this.
Thank you, and especially Dawn, Debbie and Beth, and the leadership team. We had a lot of conversations about this, many, many, many. And the teachers who are here tonight and their contributions to the conversations have helped. So I feel good. Thank you.
I think there's a comment, Andrew.
I just have a question. With this new second layer, there's no description for the out-of-district coordinator. Will that be coming forward?
The out-of-district coordinator position hasn't changed, it's just been rediscussed. It's the same responsibilities as in the past, except the amount of time being allocated to do those responsibilities is being rediscussed, based on the findings from the consultants. The comparable data in terms of ratios for out-of-district coordinators was lower, hence we felt like we could do that without, without it being overly cumbersome. And so it's not a change in the job, job description.
And now finally, and I'm not going to entertain a motion, but I would like to recognize that today is Maggie's birthday. We do not need to sing, but happy birthday.
There's no one I'd rather spend like.
There's no one I'd rather spend my.
Uh, thank you. Do we need to hold a go to adjourn? Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.